Mr. President.
Here.
Mr. Redd.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Still here.
Mr. Lusko.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Mr. Capoli.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Still here, Ms. Claudio.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're on to our second application of the night, which is a continuation from last meeting for the Edelman Investment Group LLC at 112 to 114 12th Avenue.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like just two procedural advancements and then swear in our witness as our borough witnesses, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Shiper and Mr. Delonsky. So, number one, I received some messages and communication from several members of the public who essentially said to me, and they didn't even want to sort of give their names, is that they felt intimidated to speak at some of the prior hearings. They felt as if everyone who testified on either side or who asked questions on either side were met with resistance, hesitation, croupping and jeers and other what were perceived to be sometimes aggressive responses. And there was a concern that the members of the public who might spoke, that there was a concern that some of the members of the public who either support the application or who are opposed to the application might be intimidated or annoyed or afraid or might not want to come back. And I'm sure we can all agree, and I know we do all agree because we all have talked about this in another context, that, you know, that could not happen. And that concern would really be in a diving into our entire process here. So, and obviously, we here in Belmar and we here at the Belmar zoning board are much better than that. And those things, even the, and I'm not saying that it happened, but the perception, that really can't be tolerated. So, basically, and what you'd always be concerned about is if someone feels that way, that the perception becomes reality and that they don't come back, or they feel, you know, turned out or turned off of the system and where they feel marginalized and that, you know, if we let that happen, we fail. We need to hear from the people who like the application, we need to hear from the people who have concerns about the application. So, and I guess, I wrote here even more importantly, I don't know if it's even more importantly, but as a, any proven claim or even claim that the public comments were not welcomed or entertained or considered could potentially compromise any more vote that we ultimately take, whether we approve the application or deny the application. So, I don't want to belabor the point, but with the chair's consent, I am respectfully reminding everyone that we sort of, you know, have to, we have a time honor and a legally sanctioned public hearing process, and we all don't have to necessarily like each other and we all don't necessarily have to agree with each other. And there's certainly room for legitimate debate as to how you feel about the application, but in the end, we all do have to listen to each other. And that's not just because it's right to do this, because what the municipal land use law requires. So, I guess we just have to be a, in the words of a former president, we've got to be kinder and gentler and be more receptive and sensitive to the idea that everyone has a right to speak. So, the next topic, I received an anonymous letter from someone and they had comments on the application. I don't even want to say it was comments in support of the application or concerns against the application, but we really can't accept that. Anonymous letters are not allowed. And the reason is, under the municipal land use law, that's considered hearsay. You know, if the person comes here and reads their letter, that's totally fine because you all, the board members, could say, hey, we put it on a parking plate here, would that satisfy you, or if we moved this fence, or all those things. So, I just want the members of the public to know that if you do have something to say, come and say it during the right time of the meeting, because letters, whether it's anonymous or written and you signed your name and address and phone number, still cannot be accepted. And I don't want people to think that sending a letter is, you know, suffaces for them because it doesn't. If it's not read into the record, then it's not part of the record. So, that having been said, we now, April, form wise, do we have anyone who has to sign any certifications that they listened to prior meetings? Are we all pretty good?
Proven.
Excellent. So, what we're going to do, Ted Bianchi, you are our zoning officer, construction official and fire official. You swear that the information you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth, the best we know, to help you guide.
Okay.
Thank you. And we also have Joe Venizia here, he's our borough engineer for Mazer Consulting. Hello and good evening, Joe. If you could swear to him, and you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth, the best we know, to help you guide.
Good to know.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Shiper and Mr. Delonsky.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I think when we last left off, you had Mr. Kennel, Mr. DeFalco and Ms. Hearn present technical parts of the application. We abruptly ended the meeting at about 11:30 while we're still in the public portion. Was there anyone here at the last meeting that wanted to ask a question specifically regarding the technical presentation that didn't get a chance to? We're going to open it back up to public questions later in this hearing. I just want to close out that public portion from the last meeting. All right, seeing none, we'll close that public portion and open it back up to Mr. Delonsky.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals, municipal professionals, I'd like to provide a quick overview of what we're going to present tonight so that perhaps we have a roadmap for what we're covering and what we're doing. We'd also like to advise the board that the applicant has spent the last month reviewing a lot of the comments that were made and will be presenting formal revised plans before the next meeting, so you'll have ample time to review them.
Said before the next meeting?
What next?
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting?
Yes. Correct.
Because he used to call.
Considering from the time, I think that's going to, okay. For the board's benefit, I'm going to have Mr. DeFalco just describe for the board the changes that were discussed and what will we present with these formal revised plans in very brief and summary.
Good evening. The...
And just for the record, you were previously sworn in.
Yes, Richard DeFalco was an engineer and planner.
And you recognize you're still under oath.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, as Ms. Delonsky explained, we heard a lot of comments about some of the site plan issues. We, with help of all of the people on our team, traffic engineer and the attorney-client, have revised the ground floor plan, keeping the building itself, which is the three residential floors above the parking level, keeping that portion floor plan the same. But we made some changes to the plan. In summary, the original plan had 24 parking spaces, one of which was a handicap spot. The handicap spot in the garage necessitated a 98-inch ceiling height. Their revised plan provides for 44 onsite parking spaces, an increase of 16 spaces, and the relocation of the handicap space to the street where there will be two handicap And the ability, although not finalized yet, to lessen the height of the garage from eight foot two to somewhere above seven, which is the minimum height. So, we have some latitude on our building height. Presently, the Belmar Inn is 41 feet tall to the peak, and the height of our building to the roof is 41 and a half feet. We believe that by the time the plan is resubmitted, we will be at or below the height of the existing Belmar Inn with the proposed new building. The last time we talked, there was talk of a parapet around the four sides of 42-inch high. So visually, although the measurement to the roof is measured to the top of the deck and the parapet is exempted from that, visually, you'll see from the street, it looks like a taller building with a parapet. So, we're also investigating with the architect the possibility of reducing the parapet since we're not going to be using the rooftop deck for recreational purposes anymore. There will be the air conditioner units in the center of the building, and there will be a screen around those units, but that is exempted from the height requirement. So, the plan has been revised. We will fine-tune it again between now and the next time it's submitted, but in essence, two on-street spaces for handicap, 40 onsite parking for the guests, and there are 10 single spaces and 15 tandem spaces. So, there was, tandem is one space in front of another, like a garage in a driveway situation.
And how many tandems?
Fifteen. So, 30 total of tandems, 15 of 15, and 10 single spaces.
You went from 24 parking spaces to 40?
Yes, sir. And two in the street for the handicap, which allows us to potentially lower the height of the structure because we don't need under clearance in the garage for the handicap van. We also removed the landscaped bump out, which we had envisioned to green up the area. So, the curb line is going to remain straight through. But because we have handicap parking in the street, what we envision is to have a flush curb, have pavers flushed with the gutter and everything at less than 2% slope up to the front door. So, like a plaza area that would exist in front of the building from the curb line end, we're proposing bollards to separate the handicap access area from the pedestrian sidewalk, but it'd be an open, level area with no steps. The plan also shows two single car garage units where the driveway used to be. So, there'd be two doors for two individual automobiles. That's part of the 40 spaces. All right, something else we talked about was there was several cantilevered areas on both sides of the building. We're pulling those back about a foot so the side yard variance that we had sought will be about one foot less than it was before. In the front of the building, we pushed the front setback from five and a half to seven and a half feet to take two more feet off the front, projection of the architectural features of the building. So, we've pushed the building in about a foot each side, left and right, and two feet off the front. And the height will probably come down as well.
So, what you proposed on the side yard setback?
I believe there's a one-foot reduction on the left and on the east and west side from what was requested initially.
So, can you give me a list, because we've had changes. I want to, we're all about our job is to still give variances. Can you tell us what are the variances now with your current plan?
I think what I'd rather do is, when we submit the plan, I'm just giving an overview of what is going to happen, what's going to come next month or whenever it's rescheduled, just so you know that we did hear comments from the public and we're sensitive to that and we're tweaking the plan and increasing the setbacks, reducing the height, increasing the parking.
Okay, so can you still have one, like, you know?
I don't have the exact numbers to tell you.
Okay, but can you just, can you tell me that again and I can take a note for a moment?
Sure.
Okay, so you said increase?
Increase setbacks on east and west side of the building.
Okay.
Increase setback on the south side of the building. Reduce the height of the building. Eliminate the bump out that was in the street.
So, we're not submitting any hard copy revisions?
I just wanted to let you know that we are going to make changes on what they will probably consist of.
We had a conversation, had a conversation with Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Shiper's did.
Just recently?
About these revised plans, and he suggested that because we need to present them 10 days before, that we just wanted to give you an idea that we were listening and that changes were coming for the next meeting.
And I'm not opposed to that, I just want to follow.
Yeah, and so we're going to give you the detail, of course, with what those changes are, they'll be submitted with those revisions. Just didn't want the board to think if there was testimony coming tonight that things weren't changing, especially with respect to the number of parking spaces involved in the application. So, that was really the point. I just wanted to present an overview to make you aware that things were coming.
And I know, I know that Manny just mentioned, but I want to make sure. So, you said 24 to 40 parking spaces?
Well, 40 onsite and two designated spaces in the street.
Okay.
So, that's 42.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to understand.
And you're suggesting these revisions are a result of the comments that have come before you?
Yes.
Okay. From the public and possibly the zoning board as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what I need to know. It's okay.
I think we spent probably, Mr. Fowler, the last meeting, talking about parking. Well...
As our traffic, yes, we had a traffic engineer.
Yes.
We had, I forgot, what was your title again?
Civil engineer.
Yeah, I should, I apologize. You've come before the board like several times. Okay.
Where'd you graduate from then?
All right. So, at this point, we have three subpoenaed witnesses that we'd like to present. Mr. Shiper, do you want to present the three witnesses? And I'm going to get up so they can sit here and consider.
There's more chairs here, too.
So, Mr. Kennedy, you were aware that revisions are going to be coming?
I had a conversation with Mr. Shiper yesterday or the day before.
Right.
And I was told that they were considering the possibility of revising the plans.
Okay.
So, I had a teaser alert, but I wasn't sure that they would. And what the gist of the conversation was, was that in accordance with the Jersey Law, if plans are going to be revised, subsequently revised, they would need to be on file 10 days in advance, just so the public could see them, so that you all could see them, and our engineer could see them.
Okay. So, April, will be a receipt of the revisions. What would you expect?
I mean, whenever we get them in, whenever they submit them.
So hypothetically, in September, which is when the next meeting's going to be scheduled, there could be additional revisions which could move it to October.
I mean, I will defer that to the applicant's team, but they definitely indicated, like I said, as of yesterday, I was told that they were thinking about some revisions and clearly they've been thinking about it. And so, when they get them in, they will make sure that they're intended days in advance, whatever that next meeting is.
Understood.
I think in our experience as a board, it's not that uncommon to get revised plans without things come through. So, it's definitely part of the process. Please continue with your application.
My first witness would be Robert Poff. Mr. Poff? Poff, if you could assume the seat on the end.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Belmar zoning board. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Robert Poff, P-O-F-F, 601 Main Street, Belmar.
Sure. And, Mr. Poff, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay. And just so I know, you are testifying in your capacity as?
Director of Code Enforcement for the Borough of Belmar.
And, Mr. Shiper, you just handed me, do you want me to mark this into the record?
Please.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask, April, do you know what we're up to? Hold on.
I have B-11 was our last.
All right, what about A?
A-18 is what I guess.
So, we'll do A-19 is a communication from the Chami Shiper's Law Firm, Chami Shiper and Delonsky, how rude would it be to ignore Mr. Delonsky when he's here. Date is June 27, 2018, and it is a letter to the April Claudio. As you know, the hearing, the applicant hereby requests the presence of the following borough officials at the hearing. Robert Poff, Code Enforcement, Frank Sinelli, Code Enforcement, and Ryan DeLea, Fire Department. The applicant intends to call them at the time of the hearing for testimony. Please accept this correspondence as a notice and move subpoena. So, we'll mark that as A-19.
Thank you. Mr. Poff, you understand you're here by way of notice and move subpoena to come and testify truthfully in this application, correct?
Correct.
And for the board, would you please give them the benefit of your, I think you directly said your title, but what your title is, your training, and how long you've been in court?
I've been employed with the Borough of Belmar going on 36 years. I was a special police officer for 35 of those years. I'm now with Code Enforcement 34 years, I believe.
In your capacity as a special police officer for 35 years, within that capacity, did you investigate 2C violations, ordinance violations, criminal violations within the Borough of Belmar?
Yes, sir.
And in your capacity of code enforcement officer over the course of those years, did you also investigate quality of life complaints and issues such as nuisance, liveness, and all the rest? How probably the board might be doing, right?
Many times. I received complaints about garbage being out, overcrowding, houses just being dilapidated. Anytime, especially in the summertime, we respond to all kinds of calls. I respond to fire alarms, I respond to anything that I'm called for, especially if it has to do with any kind of, you know, occupancies or renters, landlords.
And in that capacity, I'm going to direct your attention, drill right down to him, to direct your attention to your familiarity with property located in the 12th Avenue, commonly known as the Belmar Inn. Are you familiar with that property?
Very much.
And testify for this board the basis of your statement very much, how you're familiar with them.
Poff, 2017, I responded 52 times to the Belmar Inn on various types of complaints, false alarms, fire alarms, drunken disorderlies, overdoses, anything that possibly, fights, always on a fight in the lobby or in the rooms, you know, getting people out of there, trying to, you know, just maintain the quality of life, which is very hard in there because they just come and go.
Now, the deprosity itself, are you familiar with how many rooms and how many bathrooms there are in that property?
I did know it one time, I do not remember now.
Records seem to indicate approximately 40 bedrooms.
Yeah, that's right.
Forty-two bathrooms, I believe. Does that sound approximately right?
About right, yes.
I believe at one point in time, your office indicated to me a lawful capacity of approximately 80 persons at the Belmar Inn.
Correct.
Have you had occasions to investigate overcrowding or capacity violations at the Belmar Inn?
Yes, many times, because they bring friends down for the weekend or they want a party, so they wind up sleeping on the floor, you know, they sleep wherever they can.
So, if the capacity is approximate, maximum is 80, can you give the board examples of the capacity that you've seen and that your district summons is for or warns or attempted to clear persons out of the Belmar Inn within the last several years?
Many times, there's 40, there's 40 rooms and you have 80 people in there, but I've gone in there with the five or six people in one room just sleeping on the floor because they either said they were too intoxicated to drive home or they couldn't walk or, you know, whatever the reasoning was. So, many, many issues, issues have been addressed there because of the overcrowding, and it just never got any better because just different people, different one, and every year was the same thing, just never got any better.
And you indicated, I believe, in 2017, you responded 52 times. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would that be consistent, let's say, over the last five-year period without making you, you know, count?
Yes.
Summons and visits?
Absolutely.
And when you would respond, would you solely respond or would you respond with either backup or partner, fire, police, or assistance?
Yep, I was either a primary or a backup, but I would go there with the fire department, I'd go there with the first aid, you know, whatever was required. But anytime, usually anything in the Belmar Inn, I would always respond to.
Are there many properties within town that you're familiar with that was such a, put demand on your public services as the Belmar Inn has been over the past five years?
Absolutely not. It's not only just the police department and fire department and the strain that's putting on the board of education, the schools, it's just horrendous because most of the kids there are special needs, so it just never gets any better. I've never seen it improve over all these years.
Can I interrupt? No, you can't, sir. What we'd like to ask, um, nicely and politely, is to please keep quiet and allow the testimony to go forward. We can't hear what the applicant is saying when people are shouting from the audience and the tapes can't pick it up. Everybody gets a chance to speak here. This application will take as many meetings as it needs to, but everybody's going to get a chance to speak. So, please, if you could just hold your comments and talk or questions until it's the public portion. Thank you.
Shouldn't it be relevant with the building and not with the past history of that place?
All right, we can't, we can't do this. Appreciate it, but we can't, we've got to continue. Thank you, Mr. Shiper.
Please, thank you, Mr. Shiper.
Thank you. Mr. Poff, in your capacity as director of code enforcement, would you receive complaints either from the public at large or particular segments of the neighborhood regarding the Belmar Inn over the past five years?
Most of the complaints would come from the neighborhood.
What type of complaints would you typically receive and in what frequency from the neighborhood?
Drug and disorderlies, cars coming and going at all hours of the night. I mean, there's many drug arrests made out of there.
Do you have an opinion as to whether the Belmar Inn cast a positive light on the public welfare of 12th Avenue and its surroundings?
Belmar Inn does not cast a bright shadow or a bright sun quite in my eyes. It's just a drain on the community, on all the resources we have in this town.
Now, have you been involved in issuing summonses to the Belmar Inn prior to the 2018 season, which may include the beginning of 2018?
I'm sure I have.
Was there a point in time that the Belmar Inn closed?
Yes.
Are you familiar with whether that was a voluntary cease by them as a result of summonses and perhaps anything else?
I don't know if it was voluntary, but they did close upon our strict request between the fire department and my department.
And what was the basis of the summonses that were issued that you feel led to their potential closing in early April?
Well, the last major problem I had there was there was no heat in the middle of January and February, so we made them put the occupants up in a motel until they got the problem resolved. As we were checking the rooms, the rooms, everybody had electric heaters, which is prohibited on every law you could think of in a motel like that or a hotel.
Now, the owners and or business entity running the business, do they have the ability to reopen?
At this point, I do not believe they, they are working their way there, but they're not open yet.
But from your perspective, there are no legal orders or impediments if they make repairs to reopen as a going concern, is that correct?
Nothing's stopping them from reopening.
Are you familiar with whether they have submitted any permits, documents, plans for either fire or construction as of yet to potentially reopen the business?
I know they have submitted plans for the sprinkler system for the fire department, yes. yes.
Are you familiar with the concept of targeting a particular building, structure, business, or institution?
No.
Are you, are you familiar that it is not lawful to selectively enforce against a particular business, company, individual, or homeowner without proper cause?
Correct.
Are you also familiar that Delmar has an order against condemnation of private property?
Yes.
From your perspective, do you believe Delmar has the ability to legislatively shut this business and structure and condemn?
I'm not sure. See, Mr. Schaefer, it's also the DCA, the state also inspects the Delmar Inn, which I have called them down several times to investigate.
What would you call them to investigate? What type of matters?
The, the last time was the heating issue, to come down, look at the furnaces, check out what was wrong with the furnaces, why there was no heat in these rooms. And they came down, they told them we had to replace or repair the furnaces, which I think they're in the process now of doing.
Was that a continuing problem over the past three to five years that we've discussed?
Correct.
Mr. Spoff, I believe I have hit most of my items. I would just give an open-ended question as director of code enforcement. If you feel there are any other issues with the existing, with the existence or continuing existence of the Delmar Inn, that you would like to tell this board, from the perspective of the director of code enforcement, I'd like to hear.
I don't believe in my personal opinions that. It's gonna get any better. I still think we're gonna have problems, the drain on the resources in this town and the taxpayers is horrendous. And it's not gonna get any better, it's only gonna get worse.
Let me ask you one more question. Being code enforcement, you're involved with new construction and building as well?
That's correct.
Have, have you seen, or do you, are you familiar with the term of the deleterious or negative effect of a structure on surrounding building structures, leading to either decadence or lack of renovation, reinvestment, or repair?
Yes, I am.
Have you noticed any effect on the surrounding block, blocks or area of this portion of Delmar, based upon your opinion about the existence of the Delmar Inn?
Yes.
What is that?
There are houses, very large houses across the street, that are also being rented out in the summertime, with large numbers of people coming in. We should, matter of fact, we shut down a house last year directly across the street. They're renting with large amounts of people. And I think if you get rid of the Delmar Inn, you're only gonna start making that whole area better.
Nothing further, Mr. Lyska.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
If I may, there's three witnesses that Mr. Schaefer intends to call, and they're all subpoenaed witnesses, they're all officials. And if, if, if it's appropriate, and we put all three on and then hold out for cross, right, in case we run the lab with testimony.
That's fine, that's fine with me, it's okay.
Yes, and in fact, it probably is preferred, with all due respect to our friends in the borough, probably, I don't know what their payment situation is here, so we get them to testify and get them to move on would probably be, be more appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Puff, you can just make yourself comfortable somewhere in your surround, we'll have you back up. My next wit-
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
My next witness would be Ryan Dullea.
All right, good evening, sir, and officially welcome you, officially welcome you to the Delmar zoning board. If you could just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Ryan Dullea, D-U-L-L-E-A.
D-U-L-L-E-A, I thought I said it wrong earlier.
It's all right.
Do you swear that the information that you're about to provide will be the truth, best we can offer to help you, God?
I do.
And you are testifying in your capacity as a subpoenaed witness, but you're testifying in your capacity as?
Fire marshal.
For?
The Borough of Delmar.
Okay, how long have you had that position?
Two years.
Okay.
I pronounce it Dullea.
Yes.
I apologize also for the pronunciation. Mr. Dullea, you understand that you are here pursuant to a notice of subpoena served on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen by my office for your appearance at these hearings?
I do.
Do you understand you're sworn to tell the proof?
I do.
And I would like to ask you similar foundational questions as I did of Mr. Puff. Could you give the board the benefit of your training, your experience, and the nature of your employment?
Sure, I'm a career firefighter, I've been a firefighter for about ten years, I've been a licensed inspector slash fire marshal, fire official, for five years, and I've been working for the Borough for two years. I'm also a licensed investigator for fire-
I'm sorry, also a licensed-
For fire, fire investigator.
And who do you perform that function, sir?
I perform that function for the Borough of Delmar, Lake Como, Spring Lake, and Spring Lake Heights.
Have you ever testified before, before either a council, a borough, a board, or a spirit board?
Yes, I have, I've testified in front of the Board of Appeals, which is the Construction Board House three.
Okay. The property that we're discussing here, you're familiar with, the Delmar Inn?
Yes.
Before I get into the particulars that I spoke with of Mr. Puff, I believe as fire marshal within the town, is it one of your duties to review submitted plans for proposed structures such as the condominium development herein?
Yes, part of my job, they do supply me with plans to make any recommendations to the board or to the developers.
Did you have an opportunity to review the plans that have been submitted herein, both the engineering plans and the architectural plans of JKR Engineering, Mr. DeSalko, and the architectural plans of MB Vern Architecture LLC?
Yes, I supplied those plans, and I also met with the fire department to have a meeting on them.
What does that entail when you meet with the fire department to have a meeting on that, review the plans? What is the review process? What do you do, and what is the determination you make?
So I met with the Board of Fire Officers, which is the fire officers from all three fire companies in town, where we took all the proposed plans that we had been provided by the planning board in April. And we examined the plans, we did a presentation, and we went over any concerns that we may have.
I have not seen a correspondence, nor have I, I heard any objections to the plans. Could you tell me what your conclusions were and what your summaries were, if any, for us in the board and the public?
Sure, yes. With our, with our, I guess, our meeting, we sat down, we looked at the plans, we looked at what's proposed, and right now, to our understanding, the building has a full suppression system, which is a water-based sprinkler system, in, from the parking garage all the way up to the third floor, or the fourth, whichever highest floor of the living space. With that being said, with the current building, the way it is at the Delmar Inn, it has a limited area detection system, which means there's a monitored fire alarm in common areas, which would include the basement, but not inside the occupant rooms. And there is a limited area sprinkler system, which means that one stairwell at this time is sprinkler, which protects the stairwell, in a sense, but it does not protect the occupant rooms, fire spreading from rooms or above. So it's also fed by a domestic water line, it's not a higher pressure like a sprinkler system would be based on. With that said, meeting with the fire department, there would be no real concerns or anything different than any other structure we have in town.
Are you able to make a determination as to the, as to a recommend, recommendation where the propriety of a new, modern, fully fire-suppressed building is being proposed by element redevelopment versus leaving the existing Delmar Inn in its, let's say, sort of backed-up operational status with whatever you would need it to be operational, the safety measures in place between the two? Is there an enhancement to health, welfare, safety for both occupants, neighbors, and firefighters of the new plan versus the old?
So with the old plan as the existing building, there's only so much as a fire official we can do. We can only make them do certain requirements based on the year of the building, what the building is used for. So for that type of building, it is not required to have a sprinkler system. So we cannot, just as a borough, go over and say, please install a fire sprinkler, we would really like that. It's, it's not in the code to do that. With a new construction, there's more stringent rules to that, where it could be required, and as we've learned, it is required as a proposed plans to have that sprinkler system, which would make it a much more safer environment for the occupants inside the structure and the firefighters responding to an emergency inside that structure.
Would your opinion be this would be more conformity with the concerns of the body politic and the zoning and safety laws of the Borough of Delmar?
I feel that the proposed structure with the fully suppressed building is much safer and would be closer.
Could you just say that again?
I said I, I feel that the fully suppressed building would be a benefit to the firefighters of the community.
I think you also use the pretty much safer.
Yes, yes. If you have every single, you know, required space in that building that has a sprinkler, compared to a building right now that has a stairwell sprinkler, it's a lot safer.
All right. Do you have anything else to add for the board, from the fire marshal's perspective of the evaluation of the proposed building, or in comparison of the proposed building versus the existing building, before I move on to another area of inquiry?
No.
Would you, as fire marshal, prefer to see the new proposed building fall with its safety features versus the existing structure?
Yes, personally, I would.
I'm trying to bring you to a, the line of questioning as to your investigative capacity within the Borough as a fire marshal. What do those duties entail?
So anytime that there is a fire reported to the Borough and the fire department wants an investigator, either my, either I take the investigation, or one of my colleagues take it, in assistance with, normally the Monmouth County Fire Marshal says an assistance.
And are you familiar in your capacity with the Delmar Inn and investigating as fire marshal incidents?
Yes.
Can you give the board the benefit of your knowledge, experience, and whatever data you may have from your two years in Delmar regarding the Delmar Inn?
Sure, yes. Not only investigating, but this incident started as a complaint, we had complaints that people were still living in the Delmar Inn after my office issued a punitive closing. Upon that investigation, we found that there was a small fire in a bathroom there that was started by somebody who was trespassing in that property.
Okay. I want to direct your attention, pre-closing, for the two years that you were investigating. I think you probably went into that building periodically to look for compliance, for violations, for issues, for overloading, perhaps circuits, things of that.
Yes, that is correct.
That's what I want you to focus on, to give this board the benefit in a summary fashion of those two years of investigatory duties at the Delmar Inn.
During my time as fire official, I received numerous complaints, not only from occupants, from the fire department, we had numerous calls for just false alarms there, instances where the people would bring gasoline into the building, they would pour in odor of gas, we had people pulling fire alarms, discharging fire extinguishers, altering the resources of the fire department.
And approximately, how many times would you respond, either on a weekly or monthly basis, based on your experience with Delmar Inn?
I would-
Or dependently of complaints?
I would say in excess of fifty to sixty times.
Per year?
Per, yeah.
And when you would respond, would there be other personnel of the Borough of Delmar, other than just the fire department, that would respond when this would occur, such as police department, or rescue squad, or any other assistance?
Yes, I would, I've made numerous referrals to the Monmouth County Health Department, and also state building in housing, regulates hotels, as well as code enforcement, as Mr. Puff said.
And when you would make those complaints, that would draw on those resources and those investigators would get involved and spend time with you at the Delmar Inn as well?
That is correct.
On how many times do you feel that you would be bringing in county or state personnel to investigate the Delmar Inn during the course of the year?
I know the state I've called at least four to five times, and the Health Department about the same.
In your two years?
Yes.
Do you know approximately how many summonses in the two years, or books of summonses you would have issued to Delmar in advance of them closing?
I do not have an exact number, I know I issued, still am issuing numerous violations under the Fire Safety Code. I have also written, I believe, one to two bar ordinances.
Have you received any applications, documents, plans from the owners of the Delmar Inn in anticipation of renovation and reopening of the Delmar Inn?
I have spoke to management about the possibility and their plans. I was also notified by the Construction Department that they were submitting plans and obtaining permits to put a second sprinkler system in the second stairwell, which would be the east side of the building.
If they comply with your requests and resolve the penalties, is there any impediments to them reopening and going back to business in whatever format chooses to occur?
No, approximately two weeks ago, they lifted the punitive closing on the structure, which was because the sprinkler system was frozen out and was turned off.
What does that mean in Reagan's terms?
So, so what happened was, the building, obviously, we already didn't have heat, every pipe in the building burst, so they turned off the water to the building, which turned off the sprinkler system. After we issue an imminent hazard, which would be the sprinkler system not working, we have the right to put a punitive closing, so they are not able to open until the sprinkler system, in this case, is back in functional condition.
And is that underway?
That is completed. It received a passing inspection report.
So the owners put forth fine money, energy, and effort-
Yes.
-to get this building back online, is that correct?
Yes, and while I was there today, there was two fire alarms there today. While I was there today, I did notice the second sprinkler system was installed, right at the side, stairwell in common areas.
Two fire alarms today?
Yes.
I'm just asking because I can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
So you're saying basically that at present, Delmar Inn is compliant with the requests that you're presenting to them to resolve any outstanding issues that they currently have?
They have complied with imminent hazards. An imminent hazard is something that is life-saving.
Right.
There is numerous other violations that are maintenance code that are, they're attempting to address.
But they recognize that they can't open until these things are taken care of?
Well, they, they did what they needed to do to open, so they can open with maintenance, we're gonna call maintenance violations.
Okay.
But they were two, can I ask Mr. Schaefer, but there were two fire alarms today?
That's correct.
For what?
Contractors on scene making dust, so they were re-sheet rocking, and they set the fire alarm off. I, one pulled a, someone knocked into a pulse station, fire.
Thank you.
Were, do you recall sometime earlier in this year, we were receiving a, a Oprah- Okay. Were, do you recall sometime earlier in this year, receiving a, a Oprah request to produce all your summonses, tickets, reports, things of that nature relative to the Belmar Inn?
Yes.
And did you comply with that-
I did.
-to my office to the best of your ability?
I believe so.
You are also familiar with the concept of selective enforcement of either an individual home business or structure?
That is correct, yes.
Do you understand that notwithstanding perhaps people's desires are intense with buildings or neighbors or whatever the case may be, selective enforcement is not lawful or appropriate?
Yes.
I'm going to give you the courtesy, as I did, of Mr. Puff, Director of Code Enforcement, to open the floor to you if there's anything else from the Fire Marshal's perspective regarding, one, the continuing operation of the Belmar Inn, or, two, the desire for the Fire Marshal and the Fire Department's perspective for the new proposed building. I'm going to open the floor up to you for any further comments you'd like to make before, if that.
Sure, just the fact that a fully suppressed building is proposed in this town, it's a win. Anything that has a fire suppression system in it is a plus for firefighters, occupants. The importance of that is that when this system activates, it holds that fire at check. So it's intended to hold the fire where it started. So occupants can close the door, can seek refuge, and when the Fire Department gets there, it's not blowing out five or six. When it's not spreading rapidly, it gives them a chance to get there and contain the fire to that single room. So any building in town that is proposing a full suppression system, I'm 100% in favor for with regards due to the firemen and, like I said, the people inside.
Do you have an opinion, let me ask you this. How many other condominium communities are there that you inspect within the Borough of Delmar?
I do not have an exact number, but there, there's many.
Do you find that you have to respond to condominium communities on any similar frequency that you do to the Belmar Inn?
Off the top of my head, there's nothing that jumps up like the Fire Department or me getting any complaints to condominium associates, or condominium buildings compared to a resident, a regular residential or commercial.
How does the Belmar Inn stack up, I'll pull it on your hit parade, not your creation cue, how does the Belmar Inn stack up on structures that require assistance or attention from your office compared to other units within the Borough?
They're definitely number one on the list that we've responded to, that we've had inspections completed, sat. I can only think of one other building that possibly is in the radar, but doesn't come close to the amount of times that I've been at the Belmar Inn.
In your professional opinion, would it be a significant benefit to the health, welfare benefit of the Fire Marshal's Office Borough of Delmar to see the Belmar Inn replaced by a new modern condominium structure?
A properly maintained, new construction building would.
Nothing further, Mr. Puff.
Thank you.
My third witness would be Frank Cinnelli.
Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board. If you could just take your name and spell your last name, please.
Frank Cinnelli, C-I-N-E-L-L-I.
Okay. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth with best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Okay. And you're testifying in under oath in the result of subpoena in your capacity as?
Assistant to Code Enforcement at Belmar.
Assistant to Code Enforcement. And how long have you had that position?
Four years.
Mr. Cinnelli, I think it's been summarized. Do you understand you're here by way of notice and loose subpoena to testify? You're obligated to tell the truth, trust your knowledge tonight. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Where do you live, Mr. Cinnelli?
I live in Belmar.
And for how long have you lived in Belmar?
Since 1990.
And could you give the, the board the benefit of your history regarding Code Enforcement, both in Belmar and any experience prior to it?
I am retired Jersey City Police Officer for 25 years, and then I started working for Belmar as Code Enforcement under the leadership of Bob Puff.
And during the four-year term that you worked under Mr. Puff, could you give the board the benefit of a capsule summary of type of investigations, calls, dispatches you would ordinarily respond to?
Well, we handled inspections. We would do title transfer inspections on homes. When the homeowners rented out their homes for the summer or the winter or year round, we would do the inspections, checking for cleanliness, safety issues, fire, smoke detectors, and then we issued summonses or warnings to homeowners if there were violations of garbage or debris around the property or overgrown grass. So probably numerous summonses were written out for violations during the summer, especially for summer rentals.
Do you have knowledge and experience of being detailed or dispatched or conducting investigations on the Belmar Inn at 112, 12th Avenue?
Yes, we responded there numerous times. Bob, myself, and Ryan responded there a lot, and also with the County Board of Health, when we had calls there.
And can you give the board the benefit of the type of calls you recall responding to at the end?
Well, there, there were many, as, not to be repetitive, I'm sure Bob told you all about them, but probably the worst was this winter. We had a call there for no heat, and myself, Bob, and Ryan responded, and there were about 22, 22 units that were occupied, and we had to get them, we placed them to another location. And when we got to the rooms, there were space heaters in each room, which, if you've seen the rooms, there were, there was one room, it was a single mom with three small children in the room, and there were bags of clothes, and the space heater was right there. It was, it could have been a total nightmare. The building could have went up because the space heater's not allowed, but that was one room. There was, there were other rooms where there was two, three people in the room, bags of clothes all piled on top, and the space heater right there. And then they found out that there were, I'm not sure, I think it was 12 gas leaks in the gas line. So they had to shut the main gas off in the building. So these people were breathing in the gas in the building also. That was probably one of the worst calls.
You seemed to touch on the, what I'll call, potential overloading of the capacity of the Belmar Inn. Do you have any knowledge or opinion from your experience for four years as to what is the capacity of the Belmar Inn in those 40 rooms and the capacity that you have noticed at the Belmar Inn during your four years?
I, I could tell you, out of the rooms that we were in, three quarters of them were overcapacity.
So three quarters of the rooms, of 40 rooms, with a capacity of 80 would have been overcrowded?
Yes.
Would summonses have been issued?
Yes. There were numerous summonses issued each time we went there.
Now, you, you listed for me a stream, and I'm just going to quickly repeat the things you investigated. I'm going to ask you whether you would routinely find violations of them at the Belmar Inn, cleanliness?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Safety issues?
Yes.
What type of safety issues would you see?
Well, the Fire Marshal would handle all the safety issues, and he would bring us to the scene with the, when there was a problem with that as far as fire code violations.
Excessive garbage?
Absolutely.
That sounds definitive. Explain what, what that would be and how the property would be ordinarily kept.
The back of the, the back of the place would just piled up. They would, when they decided to get rid of mattresses, either because of bedbugs or whatever they had in the building, we went into one room, and you couldn't even walk into the doorway because it was infested with roaches through the doorway, so we had to stay out. So the mattresses were in the back of the, of the building. We had, I think we did write them, we wrote them summonses on that, piles of garbage that the container didn't, it didn't fit, so it was on the side of the containers.
Now, the, the containers of garbage, the garbage is not self-contained within the structure of the existing Belmar Inn, is that correct? It's dumpsters?
Dumpsters, correct. And they come, but they, during the summer, they're overloaded because they don't have them come often enough, and we told them they had to increase it, but they never did.
Now, according, according to the Belmar zoning plan, or also Code Enforcement, also the Belmar zoning ordinance, is correct?
Yes.
This was a pre-existing non-conforming use, correct?
Yes.
But apparently, they would have dumpsters for storage of garbage on site, correct?
Yes.
Sounds to me like that is not a conforming use or mannerism desire within a residential zone, is that correct?
They, I guess, they could have been grandfathered in, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, my, my point being is, how many other dumpsters in a residential dumpsters in a residential zone are there within the first blocks of, of the ocean-
None.
-other than the Belmar Inn?
None.
How about the investigating debris complaints and debris violations you testified you did? How, how does that apply regarding the Belmar Inn?
Well, there would be, we would write them summonses for bottles and cans on the property in the front. If there was garbage on the side, we would write them sanitation summonses, property maintenance summonses.
Was this type of behavior of the Belmar Inn somewhat consistent over the four years that you were the assistant Code Enforcer Borough of Delmar?
Yes.
You also live in the town. I'm going to open the floor as an assistant Code Enforcement officer, add or from your 28 years in town and then the observations you may have made. If there is anything else you'd like to add from a Code Enforcement officer or personal perspective regarding the continuation of the Belmar Inn and/or vis a vis the replacement of it with a modern condominium complex?
Well, I don't want to work myself out of a job because, you know, if I said, you know, because the Belmar Inn does keep my, does keep me working.
Do you get overtime?
I don't know about, I don't, I don't know. The town doesn't pay overtime. We'd have to talk to the mayor about that, but, you know, we do keep, we kept very busy over there with, with the violations. So, so I guess if you put your new building up, you're going to probably put me out of the job, but that's okay because it'll clear up a, a big mess that we have in town.
Nothing further. I think that, that this juncture is the three Borough professionals, so I think we're ready for cross of them.
Okay. Would cross consist of board questions?
Or what? I'm thinking of a board.
And then, and there are no attorneys here, okay?
My understanding is, pardon?
All right. Well, with that, we will open to board questions, and because Mr. Fowler does a great job leading off, we'll go back to Mr. Fowler.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure.
Before I lead into any questions that I have, based on that three cross-examinations, that, what time did this presentation start?
Eight thirty.
Eight twenty-four, eight thirty. I'd like to go, I'd like to go to memory lane for a second, Mr. Chairman. Not long, but as I recall, when this whole thing got started with this application, the applicant, Mr. Shikers, was kind enough to put together a report, an extensive report, on all the code violations that had taken place out of the Belmar Inn. And we sat here in the first presentation for almost an hour, listening to overdoses, fighting, situations, confrontations, whatever. So since eight twenty-four, these people have reiterated the information Mr. Shikers shared for them. If the concern is to move forward so that we're in a position to review and discuss this building, I don't understand why we keep going back instead of... I love everybody in this room. I love Mr. Shikers, but we're volunteers up here, and we all have lives. We have children, and we have families, and we have things to do. And I don't have to cross-examine them because I've already heard the presentation two or three meetings ago. So do I have anything to say? Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
I do have a question for the Fire Marshal.
Yes.
Is that a wet or a dry system that works?
That is being proposed?
Yes.
I, we're not, I don't have knowledge of that. That would be under the UCC process?
The wettest, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And I have, I have one quick question. If the Belmar Inn, if the, if the condos were not being constructed, and somebody showed up and wanted to put a single-family house there, are they required to put in a fire suppression system?
That's not my, my code only involves commercial buildings, so that would be-
So it would only involve a commercial building. So if a commercial building was coming forward, they'd be required to put in a fire suppression system?
Depends on the use of the building and whatnot, but that's all-
If it was a condo, 24 units, five units, three units, one unit?
I don't have, that would be under the construction code, which is a different area.
Would they be required to put in a fire suppression system?
Multiple ones, yes.
On multiple?
On R2, required to put-
So if there were just two units there?
Two units, not three.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Is there anything further?
It might come up. There's a chance. There's a chance. I'm trying not to, it's a good thing the Yankees are not playing. That's all I'm aware of.
Monsieur?
I have a couple of questions, and I would assume that it's for maybe all three gentlemen who were here. Somebody mentioned there's gas in the building. What do you mean, like red containers of gas people bring in the building? I couldn't follow that.
Yeah, occupants of the hotel, what it seemed like was they were doing daywork, so they would bring their gas containers inside the hotel, inside the lobby, inside the rooms, et cetera. And what happened is the gas container leaked, and employees or passersby, I'm not sure who called exactly, but we responded there for improper storage of gas in the building.
But is there a kitchen in the facility?
There was a kitchen. It was not maintained or upcap.
And it upgrades off the gas?
Yeah, there is natural gas to the building.
Okay.
So there's gas in-
Yeah, that, that, and gas in containers is like gasoline you would use for your car, compared to, as, yup, as Frank talked about, the gas leaks, that was actual natural gas coming from the street to run the boilers or water heaters, whichever.
Okay, so there's like gas in a red container, that's what I see?
That, that's exactly what they, they were leaking, but they also did have natural gas leaks that Frank talked about.
What happens when they get together?
Well, one's a flammable liquid and one's a flammable gas. So I mean, any, any spark or anything like that to have a explosion or fire.
Have an explosion, okay. All right. And one of you gentlemen mentioned that you've written one to two Borough Ordinances?
Yes, I did.
Tell me what that is.
So the Borough Ordinances in the Fire Prevention Guidelines for the town, we have certain things that we can enforce, such as numerous fire alarms, non-reportable fires, et cetera, and they were issued one, one or two for alarm activations.
So they say, say you issued violations for Borough Ordinances?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. For fire, obviously, fire, because-
Yeah, they ordered the fire prevention-
Yeah, there, Ryan, I'm getting there. Okay. So a suppressed building is a building that has the stairwells, the doors that close at different times. And I worked in a suppressed building, I think. So it has the, close the doors so that the fire could, the government So it has the, close the doors so that the fire could be contained if there's a fire, that's one part of it. I would assume that the next part is that there's sprinkler systems that work, and there's fire alarm systems that work.
In, in a meeting game building, yes, there would be fire separation, there could be drywall doors, et cetera, sub-closing, or, you know, automatic when the fire alarm goes off, the doors release, they shut, in a perfect world, and yes, they would have a sprinkler system. If the building required a sprinkler system, it would have a sprinkler system.
I don't want to be repetitive, but, you know, I am here to vote, and I want to hear all the different perspectives before I do vote. I was at Seton Hall University when the fire happened, and it was horrific, it was horrible. So, and I just, what is it, eight months ago, I live on Ninth Avenue, and there was a fire on Tenth, and the houses next door, I saw it with my own eyes, at very close in the morning, it was horrific. So I want to ask you this question, I don't know if this is a fair question, you could tell me, no, I can't answer that. What's the likely, okay, so, Belmar Inn right now is not a suppressed building, it's not code, it's...
No, it has a limited area system, like I said, that they chose at one point to put fire sprinklers inside of a stairwell. They, it's just the stairwell area, it's nothing more.
So in the rooms, there's not fire system?
No, there's not even, there's battery-operated smoke detectors, so if one of them goes off, somebody actually physically has to call 911 to get a response.
Right, like I would if I...
Well, I do, yeah, in your house, in the hallways and in the basement, it's a monitored system, so if one of the hallway detectors go off, by code, it was required that they automatically down, not...
You're scared, man, go home and change a Harry Fire alarm tomorrow, so, yeah. So then what's...
If I can interrupt for one second, please. I know it's not if there's gonna be a fire now, it's when it's gonna be a fire. There's no doubt 911 is gonna happen, we don't do something. Whatever you guys want to do, do, it's gonna happen. I mean, why it didn't happen, the atmosphere you're going, it's beyond the...
All right, and then the next question, if I had, um, if I had my hat is, and that, this is what I was getting to, I don't know if you can answer this, if it's a fair question or not, but what is the likelihood that the structures next to the Belmar Inn, if God forbid, there was a fire or an explosion, that they could catch on fire as well?
So that's all dependent on building materials, wind direction, climate, you know, wind, wind, climate, but it's no different from looking at Main Street, you have structures right next to each other.
Right.
As a fireman, that, that's unfortunately one of the tasks that we have to deal with, and that's one of the priorities on the fire ground, if there was a fire, to attack one to the exposures, and then to attack the scene of the fire, so...
And the dumpsters, I think, sir, you had said the dumpsters aren't regularly...
Not, not in the summertime, they're not maintained.
They're not being tamed, okay. So is there, well, I guess you can't predict, you'd be on the stop, market, not a fire, but is there a fire hazard?
If there's more combustible, if there's more combustible material accumulating, that is a violation of the fire code, and that is issued regularly, not only to the Belmar Inn, but all over town.
Oh, that's not comforting, okay. So there's 40 bedrooms, and often there's more than 40 people in those bedrooms?
From doing spot inspections, I have observed that.
Okay. Let me just look at my notes for one more second, I just wanted...
There's 40 bedrooms, get me that, please.
Right, I got that, like double up, I'm gonna say, thank you, thank you.
A lot of times, last summer, we did inspections of all, like spot checked the hotels on, like, I think it was Memorial Day weekend or something, I won't quote me on the exact date, but we did an inspection, and I did notice in the Belmar Inn, compared to other hotels in the town, that it appeared that groups of friends would rent the rooms, and it would kind of be, as you said, like a college party.
I didn't say that, but I meant to say.
Well, yeah.
Okay, well, I thank you all, I think that's all of my questions. Oh, wait a minute, I do have one more. So you said that there are space heaters that are in the, in the, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's, this winter was horrible, you know, so what happens when that, when there are space heaters, they get fined, they have to remove them, what, what goes, does the hotel get a fine, or the people, or what happens?
So, I'll just run back to that whole situation one time, just to explain it. So when we entered the building there, it was to do a re-inspection for fire violation. When we got there, one side of the building had plastic covering the doorway, and it just seemed very odd to me, and the woman behind the desk was shivering.
Kind of like a yam in the air.
Yeah. So after speaking to her and finding out what was going on, that the heat had been, this was January, I want to say around January, there are a couple, it was exactly 12 hours before the first blizzard we had this year, because I had the pleasure of calling the mayor and telling them that they were dumping this hotel due to the natural gas issues, and we...
What do you mean dumping?
They were evacuating the building.
Oh.
So everybody had to be out about 10, 12 hours before it was there. So we had to work with management to get them in the rooms, but when we went into the other side of the hotel, every single pipe on the west side of the building was completely frozen and blown apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it it?
I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Trump.
So, this is a bit of a follow-up to my colleague, Mr. Fowler, on the end there. I honestly cannot believe that Mr. Shakers' original, going through some of the violations anecdotally, really did justice to the current state of problems that you three gentlemen gave tonight. So I think this picture from our officials under oath, in terms of what your day-to-day experience is, is much more compelling than the reading of a bunch of violations that you had first meeting, the second meeting, so I really appreciate you that being here. I have a question, I don't know if it's a question or just reiterate the statement, just to make sure that I understand it correctly, but the, I mean, I keep hearing, like, well, why can't we make them fix this, right? And I heard from Mr. Puff, and I heard from Brian, that, like, they're bringing it up to minimal compliance, but it's fairly passable, and, and because these are old structures and old codes, they'll remain in this state of risk, because they're not gonna get fully wired. You can't compel them to put a fully wired smoke alarm system that's tied to every room like we have in our house, right? A new house requires all those alarms are tied together, so if one goes off, they all go off. You have individual battery alarm that may or may not have charged batteries, so fires could be spreading from room to room, not like in our houses, because our, a new-built house has a wired smoke alarm system, this does not, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, it's...
And you can't make them put a wired smoke alarm system?
No, the state, state fire prevention code, so...
And it's a wood structure.
It is a wood structure, correct.
And, and it's old fire code, it was built when all fire codes were in existence, the new fire codes are much more stringent in terms of the materials, the thickness of the sheet rock, and all that, so...
Yeah, anything built prior to 1977, it was not built to any particular code.
Okay, all right, and in terms of not being able to shut it down, Mr. Puff, you, you were saying, I think you said, we can't condemn it or shut it down, like, like the town...
No, that's, that's not...
There's not jurisdiction for us to go in and intercede other than respond to a situation and then give a...
I can't shut this down and make them put out the people in the hotel.
No, 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 I get that, I get that, but my question is more about, the building can't be condemned, I, I mean, it's not in a condition where, where it could be shut down and cease to operate.
That's, that's...
They can reopen with very minimal changes that they need to do, and then we'll be back right to square zero with the 52 violations a year and, and the dozens of calls that haven't been answered.
If I could explain, it was five response recently, I don't know how many, it's up to four.
And, and what troubles me is, this is just the number that require response, because I would imagine that there were many situations that, that didn't get responded to as well, that, that we can't know, but we know that it's not zero, right? And then, I just, maybe a question or comment, I'm not really sure, and I don't know if it's for these three gentlemen, or maybe it's for later, but the variance relief that we're talking about, there is a test that we have to give, that is, does it add substantial detriment or contribute to improvement to the community? And I just want to ask a gentleman, I think I already know the answer, but, but it sounds like the detriment that currently exists would be remediated if it were rebuilt, as opposed to trying to rehab or re-wood some places?
I believe so, yes. If properly maintained over time, yeah.
All right, thank you, I have another question.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Mr. Green.
With fire marshal, that you do build it, do you know, is it a steel and concrete structure? Or is it wood?
I don't have any of that data.
Mr. Fowler, can I get an answer? Okay. If, Richie?
Sure.
Do you have an explanation of the decking, the steel, the concrete?
The proposed building would be a combination of concrete, steel, and it would be frame construction as well, but all up to fire code, proper separation, sheet rock thicknesses, fully sprinkler alarmed, but it would be a combination of all three materials, as far as I know. But I am not the architect, but that's what I understand the building committee.
And, or Mr. Sinelli?
Yes.
The faults that you described, the things that were issued summonses, were they corrected promptly, or not at all, that they weren't corrected promptly? And I just, the town's responsibility, is it town's responsibility to find new rooms for these people when you thought that was...
We have, yes, we have my, my answer to that. It's our responsibility, if we can't get hold of the owner, to relocate that, but in the meantime, we would have to, and taxpayers would have to relocate 80 people...
At taxpayer expense?
At taxpayer expense, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Robson.
Thank you. I too appreciate the additional comments, because living on Sixth Avenue, a few years ago, we had a fire a few doors down, and it jumped to the next house, burnt the house, and my wife and I stood out there, probably the most terrifying night of our lives, wondering whether the wind was gonna take it to our house, and I don't think I've ever felt like that before. So I really appreciate what you're, what you're talking, and if I did, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like what I would call the Belmar Inn is a fire item. And it's, you know, Mr. Puff, your, your statement was, it's gonna, it's gonna happen. And one of the things that, I think a number of the, of the witnesses stated was that the safety of the occupants and the firefighters was, would be improved. But not only that, but the safety of the surrounding residents would be partly improved.
Improved if the building no longer existed?
If the building no longer existed, or if the building, if a new building with fire suppression.
In theory, with that fire suppression, it would contain it in that building, in that room, in theory.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Mr. Ross.
Yeah, so, Mr. Puff, you went 50 times approximately in 2017, you said you issued multiple summons. Ryan, you said you went 50 to 60 times, you didn't know how many summons, like approximately, how many, what percent results in summons? And when you do summon, issue a summons, does it go to the owner of the Belmar Inn, or does it go to, make a racket?
If I can, if that sometimes it goes to the Belmar Inn, I mean, I just issued one a couple of weeks ago to the Belmar Inn, but if I, when I was a special, I'd go there, and if I had charged somebody in room, with the other two-seat charge, or, you know, disonly conduct, or maybe a drug arrest, so it would go to the individual, but, yes, it depends on what was happening at the time, and who would be responsible for the incident.
So how many of the summons approximately have gone to the Belmar Inn under the last year?
Just off the top of my head, from last year, or the year before, I'd probably say 60 have been just issued.
So what happens with the fire code is, we issue a violation, and we have to educate the business owner, the employees about the violation, and they're typically, we give them, depending on the violation, two weeks to, by law, 30 days. If it's an inherent hazard, such as the sprinkler system not working, they have up to 72, they have 72 hours, they have to get that working, if it falls in that category. I can't even guess the number of violations, pretty much any time I walk into that building, they're, I'm leaving with paperwork.
And then they result in a fine of some sort?
It, it can lead up to a fine now.
Minor all fines.
What's that?
Minor all fines or arrests.
Minor, minor, or...
No, all of his all fines or arrests.
Or arrests. And there are substantial fines on those, right? Like they go up in dollar amount?
I said five thousand.
Times, so what do you have, like dollars? Because I'm just curious, it seems, I guess my question is, why has the behavioral change over the past so many years, we've issued 50 to 60 summonses every year, and the land working...
Because it's a transient hotel, they come, they go, you know, but once...
Management will need, put Band-Aids on both, until the next time we get called, until the next time.
Has the town called the owner in and had a... Talk with them to encourage changing?
Yeah.
Numerous compositions.
I mean, they've taken my appeals to pre-hold to appeal court, because they did not agree with them, you know, and that all based on, when they lose that, then I have to get them more, you know, have to give them time to correct everything.
And I have one other question, so all the plywood and stuff that's all over the side that's going right now, they can operate and own and ride and handle that plywood all the way?
Well, that plywood was put up there to secure the building, because we had people break, going in off the second floor and breaking into the window.
So they would have to fix that?
They just have to remove the plywood, it's just there to keep people out right now. Yeah, I ordered them to put that up.
I mean, they did break windows to get in there.
Yeah.
But they would have to repair the windows, take the plywood off, because you're gonna have need to be for us to get in now.
I'm just saying, from the exterior, it looks like you could...
Yeah, no, right now, that's up there for security purposes, because I had five to six responses there.
And then, Ryan, I guess from your position, historically or traditionally, when there's mental setbacks, what impact does that have on putting fires in town, when you're within the quiet setbacks of the...
Well, any fire, depending on weather conditions, it can spread from one structure to the net, if it's three feet away or 15 feet away. It's all dependent on, you know, what's burning, what's fueling the fire, how the wind is blowing.
So you would think that greater setback would have a better fire...
It's all case-by-case basis.
I mean, look at that... I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, like, you both said that, that a fire-suppressed building would be good, and I agree with that, I guess my question is, the plan's true, that it's very, very close to the neighboring property, and what impact does that have from a fire prevention perspective, in putting these...
Well, obviously, with the building close, there is the risk for that, just as it is now, you know, from one building to the other. So if you're asking, is it more of a risk than 15 feet, probably?
Thank you, Mr. Robson.
I'm just curious, if, yeah, why is, is the animal house ordinance in effect for this, or is that only for, for private residences? Like, I don't, I don't understand why this isn't getting corrected like other properties in town.
Of course, it's a transient population, they come for me, they need...
But is it, like, listed as an animal house, and are they subject to those animal house rules?
No, I don't think...
Then why not? But like, I don't think the animal house rules includes the fact that it's a hotel.
April will be a factor, I think.
Okay.
April.
It was listed as an animal house in 2007, but they, four years on that expired, so it no longer falls under the animal house. I don't know the reason behind it, but it hasn't been an animal house since 2007.
Can I just call a question now?
Sure.
You got called 50 times, you got called 50 times in 2017, what does it take to become an animal?
It's only for summer rifles, strictly summer.
Gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
Well, it was, I guess, then how did it qualify in 2007 as an animal house? That's, it wasn't, it hasn't changed its operating status since 2007.
Well, I think I can answer that. I think at the time, there were so many drug arrests coming out of there, they annoyed that they declared that... that they declared that.
So these, these.
Folks, please, we've got to ask the questions.
I'm not quite following, I just, we just heard testimony that there were numerous drug arrests and things over the last year or so. What's changed since 2007 that really allowed it to qualify as an animal?
It depends what they issued the violation for, whether it was for noise, you know, whether it was drugs. At the time, we were trying to do everything we possibly could to control that establishment. And there's just.
We don't, we don't do it, we don't handle it.
We don't, we just write the summons.
We don't write the summons, we don't put them on a list.
That's it? All right, does anybody else have questions?
You had mentioned that there were people squatting in the building when it was closed.
Yeah, there was happening, they didn't catch anybody.
Oh.
There was reports and there was, there was two, about nine drug paraphernalia and etc.
And there was a fire?
There was a fire, there was, we had broken beer bottles, miracle cans.
You have a big fire, like one of ours?
No, a small, yeah, it was, whatever it was, it contained.
All right, you have more questions? All right, now we're gonna open up to public comment. No, I have no questions. I think I heard enough on the other one. This will be out before I open it up to public comment, if anyone asks any questions. All right. With this, we're gonna open it up to public comment. If you have any questions for the three gentlemen here, please come forward and state your name and ask your questions.
Mr. Lisko.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public question.
Did I say comments? I'm sorry. Public questions, please. Questions over questions. Fair questions to the other.
I'm Mark Presto, I live on 13th Avenue of Belmar.
And you were previously sworn in.
Yes. I have a couple of questions for the fire marshal. I think one was asked, that you did state that it's less strain and it would be much more safe than, under the proposed plan than the existing plan?
Yes, a probably suppressed building would be.
Okay. And I think there's a follow-up question, that if it was two feet away from a property line versus a required forty feet from a property line, I would think that forty feet would be safer?
Yeah, in a perfect, yeah. More decent, yeah.
And as far as strain, you said it'd be less strain on the fire department and probably other services as well, under the proposed plan than the existing?
Yes.
Okay. But with twenty-four units, would you say it would be less strain if there was twelve units or eight units?
I can't answer, I'm fluffing that. The quality, quality of comparing from condo complex to a hotel response, how many times the fire department goes to condos compared to a hotel is what I was thinking about.
I was saying, so regardless if it was twenty-four units or eight units on the property, you can't really say that the string on the services of the town, or the fire department in particular, would be any different?
Yes.
And have out from our other members here that testified, do you think it would be less rain with less condo units?
It's not the idea of less condo units, it's the idea of what we're putting there.
No, but that's my question.
Well, I came in.
And a few times, I think every witness was asked if they were familiar with selective enforcement. Everyone said they were familiar with it. I'm not sure who the expert is on it, but some of these violations seem so egregious that you would say that it wouldn't be selective enforcement, that these are so egregious that we should be going after these violations and perhaps enforcing this animal house rule that was once enforced in 2007.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Animal house doesn't regard anything with the fire code, so.
Okay.
I can't, I don't know that.
No, the question is, is we've, we've had people talk about selective enforcement, they were familiar with it. So my question is, would it be considered selective enforcement if we more aggressively followed up on some of these violations?
I think what they were talking about was selective enforcement, was selecting what kind of codes to issue to that property only in particular. So as I said, we went out, we did spot check. If I go to one bar, I have to go to every bar in town to do a spot check inspection. So we can't just single a hotel out and go to the Belmar Inn instead of the Mayfair or the White House, for example.
But if you got a lot of complaints for a certain bar, when you go to that bar more often?
No, if I go to that bar, I have to go to every other bar because I'm signaling a certain establishment out.
That's my question this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Please come forward.
Steve Blum, Level 11 Street.
And you're previously sworn in.
I have a question for the fire marshal.
Sure.
With the proposed building and the setbacks, if you had to rescue somebody off the balcony, how do you get a ladder up with only twenty-one or thirty inches in between the property lines? Because the balconies extend out two and a half feet from the five feet proposed level. How does, how does one get a ladder up there?
Is there balconies in the structure or is it just for show?
There's balconies on the plans.
Like activable space for a balcony?
There's balconies on the plans, that shows balconies on the plans. So the balconies are extending out two and a half feet from the building. So their setback is five feet, now you're going two and a half feet. So now there's only twenty-four inches or thirty inches from my property, how do you get a ladder up? Like this? I never saw a fireman go straight up in here.
So with that is, the sprinkler system is made to maintain, hold that fire and check, where the occupant can go and cover and shelter.
But suppose he had to get off the balcony, how does he get off the balcony? Jump?
Depending where it is, depending on how you get a ladder.
Well, it's either the west side, the east side, west, and the, the west side is my side, and the rear side, which would be the north side.
Depending on position.
Is five feet is the property line.
Depending on the position, you may be able to get the aerial ladder up there that we have in town, but.
How do you get an aerial ladder when someone's backyard is five feet from both sides?
And that's a fire, fire hazard. Well, it's a fire tactic question that isn't in my code either.
Okay. Just, let's just have a question. Because then the fire department's gonna have to go on my property, they're gonna have to go on Ralph's property to get the equipment up there.
But they're.
Because we're five feet from the property line without the balconies. With the balconies, it's twenty-four inches.
Mr. Blue, do you have a question?
Yes, I'll ask him, how do they get the ladders up there?
We go on your property for the ladder up, you know.
Oh, you go on my property?
Of course. Who do you think would lift a place like you?
Thank you. Next up, come on forward. If you folks want to line up and take the questions, we don't have to, we don't have to be so polite. Everybody's raising their hand, everybody gets a chance.
Address this to Mr. Pop.
Just your name and address, please.
Maria Floria, 115 12th Avenue.
And you were previously sworn in.
Certainly have. Mr. Pop, when you started your statement, you said you had a lot of phone calls from the neighbors. I'm the only neighbor. And I never called you. My neighbor is Mr. and Mrs. Edelman, who were not there in the winter time for all of this going on. I'm the only one, and I never called you. I called the police.
Who then in turn called me?
Well, that I don't know. Frank, yes, I called you about all of the rentals.
And I stopped by a few times.
The rentals.
Yes.
With all the garbage.
Yes.
And you did clean it up.
Thank you.
But never called you on the Belmar Inn.
Well, we, when the, when you, when you call the police, they call us, that's, those are, those are code violations, so they call us. So we get the calls from them. They just transfer them over to us, they do.
Mr. Pop, what are you working at?
I go early in the morning until about twelve, one o'clock, depends what I have going on.
Well, a lot of phone calls in the afternoon. I don't understand, I don't understand how you do your job for us. Thank you.
Peter, Tower 108, 100 B Street. Previously sworn in. Mr. Kennedy, I did testify before already.
Thank you.
Question before. My question first, can I ask Mr. Kennedy a question?
You can, whether or not, you can answer it, that remains to be seen.
Yes.
My understanding, we're here to hear about an application for a new building?
Yes, that was the question.
Okay. So why are we wasting this much time? I think it's already established, no one here likes the Belmar Inn.
Well, let me tell you.
Well, I guess I'm wrong, there's a lady here that says she likes it.
Listen, and I appreciate, that's a fair question, but this is a legal process. There is, there is an application, and it's a significant application, and there's a law, the municipal land use law, which says, and we talked about it, the process by which we need to go through. We have to comply with the local public meetings act, we have to comply with other, the notice requirements, we have to have the applicant's attempt to satisfy the varying standards. So against all that backdrop, we're here. Now, you being the experienced person that you are, you may not choose to prosecute the case or pursue the case that Mr. Shiper is.
I'm not here to prosecute his case.
Well, exactly, and, and if you were the applicant or the attorney, you might choose to pursue his case the way he is. You might choose to do it somewhat differently. You might choose to do it in a whole different way, and either of those things are fine. So none of us here, none of us on the board, none of us on this side of the room, none of us at that table, and none of us in the audience can say how he has to proceed and how he has to bring his case. We do have rules about not being overly repetitive and not being hearsay, not being rude and things like that. But that's the choice that he's pursuing. So I appreciate that maybe you might not do it this way, maybe I might not do it this way, but, and you did hear some members of the board said, you know, I sort of found this to be interesting, so that's.
All right, then, for the witnesses. I heard a lot of discussions and opinions. My one question to you, did you have any communications in receiving these subpoenas from the applicants in any way, shape, or form until this night regarding this application?
I don't think so.
You either did or did not, sir.
I said, I don't think so. I must remember if I had any conversation with them, prior to this meeting.
The other two gentlemen?
I, I just got told that I was subpoenaed.
And you had no communication with the applicants or any of their professionals between reception of that subpoena had tonight?
No, as far as speaking about this project, no. I'm only, I'm only, only.
Sir, a yes or no?
That's not.
Former police officer, I don't, you know, it's either yes or no. Mr. The.
Well, I, you know, but let me say, with all the respect, if you have something to say besides yes or no.
No, I'm just answering a question.
I, I know, but he's got to answer the way he wants to, not the way you want to.
Yes, I had an inspection of Mr. Shiper's property sometime in July, I believe.
Did you have any discussions pertaining?
I had an inspection of his office building.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any discussions pertaining to this application with any of the applicants or any of the professionals?
I, I reviewed the plans there.
That is.
Drawings, looked at the drawings.
Had Mr. Shiper?
At, at, yes, while I was there.
At the last meeting, I requested that the appropriate fire officials review the plans. The fire marshal has his function, the fire subcode official is the one who deals with the actual construction. I could possibly answer the questions pertaining to the gentlemen's about placement of a ladder, distances from the property line, and the construction. I know the architect is here, the engineer was unable to answer the question, maybe the architect could, since she had testified at the last meeting, I was unaware of some of the conditions at the time of my questioning of the, at the last meeting. Could I ask the architect these questions now?
I think we're past that.
I don't think that's the case, counselor, but.
If this gentleman will let me speak, I sat silently during his presentation. I mean, they may be back if there's changes to the plan where they retestify, the gentleman will have another debate. But if we start revisiting the prior witnesses, or even attempting to ask me for all of that information, we've been there. Mr. Baller's mode of speech, but he.
Forward. I asked the question related to a question that was asked that the engineer said he could not answer, that the building would be constructed of steel, concrete, and wood. He couldn't answer how it's gonna be done. So I, so I'm asking, could the architect answer that question?
Maybe address that later on, maybe we'll have it another time when that architect comes back, so can you just hold that question for a little bit?
Okay.
We're not doing a recall, Mr. Harris.
Well, then, I'd have to ask once again, the fire subcode official, have more information pertaining to the construction of the building, the balconies, whether suppression's gonna be over the balconies also, if they're gonna be open? How far is the glazing gonna be from the property line? This is all an issue here. Two and a half feet from a property line is not enough. You add another foot to it, sounds good? I still have questions pertaining to that, I hope we can answer by future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Come on.
My name's Ellen Xavier, and I reside on Ninth Avenue.
I'm sorry, Ellen.
Xavier. V as in zebra, A, V as in victor, I, A, N as in Nancy.
Okay, and were you previously sworn in?
No.
Okay, good evening, welcome. I swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provided, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to ask the three gentlemen, are you getting paid to be here or are you an overtime payment?
Neither.
One at a time, please?
No, not that I know of, I wish I was.
Okay, that would be no from one. Number two?
Yes, my schedule is flexed to be here.
Are you getting paid to be here?
Yes.
Okay, number three?
No.
No, okay, thank you very much. I drove up from Maryland to be here. I've lived here since my whole life, and I've had the pleasure of going up against Mr. Shipper, Shiper, Shyster.
Excuse me, I don't think that's a very fair statement to the applicant.
It's called the.
Do you have a specific question for the experts out here?
So the percentage of comments that each of you are saying for the square footage and the occupancy doesn't line up with the square footage and the percentage of any occupancy. So what I mean, for example, is you're stating the Belmar Inn, which this hearing is not about, okay? Not about the Belmar Inn. I, I am, I will, but he is not dictating it. You say it without him telling you what to say.
All right, wanted to get to your, your question, because.
I'm trying.
You have a good question, so let, let's ask.
The percentage you're saying to the number of occupants in the building compared to the square footage is not equivalent to the occupants in the square footage of a house that gets a number of calls. So if you have a hundred people in a building on a given night, what's the chances of you getting called versus two people in a building if the square footage per person is the same? Is that too much math?
Just, just the questions, not, not the comments.
He's, he's giving me a shaking of the head. I'm asking, do you want me to give you the math again?
No, I just don't understand your question.
Oh, okay, well then I'll re-ask it again. If I'm occupying six square feet, what's the chances of you getting called in for a violation versus a building that has six square feet and six people in it per square feet? So all the percentages and numbers of times you're getting called to this unit, you are failing to express, and I'm trying to get it out of you.
You're talking hypothetical.
The square footage in comparison to the number of people in the unit.
You're talking hypothetical.
No, I'm asking, what's the square footage of the current? No, I'm asking, what's the square footage of the current space compared to the number of people that are in that space, and the number...
I have no idea.
Okay, so, in other words, all this information...
Ma'am, we don't have an answer.
Is not applicable until you get that information. Period.
Thank you. Who's next? Anyone else from the public? Oh, come on down. Name and address, please.
Rose DeGagnon, 201 Ninth Avenue.
Can you spell your last name, please?
D-A-G-A-N-Y-A.
And were you previously sworn?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, you know, let's do it again, just in case. Do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide to the extent you provided, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you luck? Thank you.
Okay, my question, I'm very, I admire that you're very concerned about Belmar Inn, that you want what's best for them. In this property, would it be advantageous to, if another buyer came in and put single-family homes as opposed to twenty-four condominiums on this property, building, fire, would that be an advantage to us to have just single-family homes on the property?
I don't respond to...
Twenty-four units, single-family homes.
My fire code doesn't pertain to single-family houses.
If there's a fire in a single-family house...
Then I would do an investigation on that fire, but I do not have any say on anything in residential unless it's regarding a fire pit in the backyard, is the only...
I'm pretty agree with you.
Okay, so, would be advantage to have single-family homes? Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Name and address?
Lauren Arretakis, 1021 Avenue.
Can you spell your last name?
A-R-E-T-A-K-I-S, I was previously sworn.
Okay, thank you.
So, there were sixty summonses issued in 2017, is that roughly?
From me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me how many were issued in all of Belmar for 2017?
I have no idea.
Why don't you know that, but you know for the Belmar Inn?
Because I knew I was coming in tonight, so I got...
So, you have no, you can't even give like a rough estimate?
No.
Why not?
I mean, if he doesn't know the information, I don't want to give it more than that.
Okay, so then you don't know how many were issued to single-family homes?
No.
You don't know how many were issued to rentals?
No.
Only? No. And, I don't understand...
Well, I wasn't responding to any other place, I was responding to this...
I know, but if you've been doing your job how many years?
Thirty-six years.
Thirty-six years, so you don't know, you don't have like a rough estimate of how many you did last year?
That would be a guess, I want to guess.
And you can't guess? More than a hundred?
Oh, I'm sure.
More than two hundred?
Could be.
More than three hundred?
Could be.
More than four hundred?
Could be.
Okay, more than five hundred? I, I, no, I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make a point.
She's asking a question.
Because if there are forty rooms, and you're issuing a certain amount of summonses, I want to know how many were issued, what is the percentage of that compared to the rest of Belmar?
Well, if I were you, I'd reply for a note request, then you could get that from the borough. I have no idea. I don't know how many in this office I room, I don't know, I know how many I room. I don't know how many other offices were out there, I don't know how many arrests other offices made there, I don't know.
Okay. This is for any of you, would there be less of a strain if there were single-family homes there?
I think we just answered that, yes.
If there are special needs students moving into these twenty-four units, will they be a strain on the school system?
I would presume so, but right now, we know what we have coming into school system.
Yeah, it was for all of Belmar, too.
How many?
I don't know how many.
You don't have that information? So, you don't know how many students go to the, are in the school system that are in the Belmar Inn?
Right now, no, there's nobody in the Belmar Inn.
How about in 2017?
I don't know.
But you said it was a strain on the school system?
Of course it is a strain, yes.
Why is it a strain if you don't have, but you don't have a number?
I don't know the number. You keep asking the numbers, I don't know the number.
Okay, well, I kind of find that you're not really giving me any answers, but I'm just bringing up more points for the board to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dennis Perez, 209 Eleventh Avenue.
Hey, spell your last name.
P-R-A-S.
I'm sorry?
P, White Computer, P-R-A-S.
And were you previously sworn?
I don't think so, right?
No. All right, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provided, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you luck?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, one question for the applicant. The files that we have are all, is it a complete makeup? Does it talk about the structure of the cave? Is it a complete set of plans from your architect? Or is it just...
The microphone.
The question is, is, if I understand it, does the board and are on file, is there a complete set of architectural plans?
Correct.
I would have to assume, Mr. Shiper's, that there are, and Mr. Lonsky, there are complete architectural plans on file, correct?
There are floor plans, there are elevations, there are engineering plans available for review. Same plans that are submitted for generally every application are not detailed construction plans that are drawn after...
And you're about to propose it.
Right, right, no, and that's another point, because that would put us asleep, a lot of the questions that are being asked, with regards to setbacks, the boughs, whether it's combustible material or not. Also, I would like to take a peek at those, do that. I do appreciate what that has done so far, the, I believe, a little bit of change, change for the community is good. I understand there's people in the audience rather seeing one or two family homes, I get that, but the condition of the Belmar Inn, the way it is, the way it will be, if Bill decides to bail, because at the end of the day, it's all about his return on his investment. And the other thing I would say is that I do appreciate him blocking off...
Mr. Perez, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did, the question I add was regards to the plans being available.
Okay, and this is just a question portion, we will have another comment before, sorry with you guys. Thank you. Who's next?
Joan Corallo, 101 Eighth Street.
And just spell your last name, please?
C-L-O-L-L-A.
Okay, good evening, and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provided, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you luck? Thank you.
Tonight's hearing, apparently, I'll get to the question, is about the Belmar Inn, their own trial, apparently. We've been sitting here for two and a half hours, listening to war stories about the Belmar Inn.
Back to the form of the question, Mr. Kennedy, the, these are questions that you must explain to the board, there are several Supreme Court cases towards the public that require a detailed examination of existing property, its functions, how it functions, its history, its compliance and non-compliance, and then what is proposed. Without this factual basis, these same objectors would go to court and say there was no foundation laid for the board to consider the prior structure, its impact on the society. So, I, with due respect to Ms. Corallo, I understand her desire to move forward, but there must be an instruction, because the criticisms are going through the process, the process must be explained, clearly must be.
Thank you.
So, do you have questions for...
Will you code enforcement and whatever, you gave us statistics about the Belmar Inn, what will it take to close it?
Joan, we just closed it, and now you're...
Yes, to keep it closed, because apparently it's an ongoing nuisance. You write your tickets, you do your job, which we do pay you for, that's part of your job to go there and do that. What will it take to permanently close it? Rather than, it's almost like we have an ultimatum here. Take this project with all these condos as opposed to the Belmar Inn. We can't, you know, there must be ways to, you know, be more vigilant with the Belmar Inn. I mean, as neighbors, I'm sure we'll make more calls, but it just doesn't sound right. All these tickets, all these calls, and do we have to go further behind, besides the borough?
I guess.
Do we have to go to the county, do we have to go to the state?
We've tried to go, we've got the county health department involved, we've gotten the...
So, are they not doing their job?
I'm answering your question, I'm answering your question. Everybody, there is a minimum standard that they have to meet, that they meet, and then we come back and they're not meeting that standard, so they get the violations again, they get a chance to correct it. For us to walk into a building and close it down, it needs to have unsafe structural members, like we said, we shut them down for the time being because their fire suppression system was turned off. So, we give them the chance to correct it, and they fix it, that's how the fire code works.
What are some of the standard requirements for inspections? Is it once a year? Is it once a month?
For the Belmar Inn, yes, it's once a year unless we get complaints. So, if they...
How about the transient people that are in there? Who checks the roster? Isn't there a rule or a regulation that says we need to check them?
That's beyond the fire code, and that's beyond the property maintenance code. People living in a building is not property maintenance, nor is it a fire code, is a question. That's a question maybe for your police department or somebody else. I mean, even though...
Isn't Mr. Palm part of the police department?
Not anymore. So, pretty much what we can do is we can shut a building down for one of, I believe...
I think we can deal with the devil we have, rather than...
I'm trying to answer your question.
Can I just, I think you asked a good question. But that's, you asked a good question to Brian. What are some of the standards that would...
There's five reasons. One would be the inadequate fire suppression, structural conditions, that would be the construction department, they would have the ultimate rule. But, as it lays, these are what we call maintenance violations, so it's not a structural issue, it's not, you know, something like those, maybe. So, all these maintenance violations, we can't just go into a building and close it down because they have extension cords or they're reason power strips. We need to educate them what they're doing, how it's a hazard, we have to give them at least fourteen days to fix it, when we come back, and they plug it back in.
Good.
Then you have to go back more often.
Well, we're only required by the state to go once a year. The state comes once every five years. I've called them about six times and they haven't came there, so I don't...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, come on. N-A-G-G...
I-A-R.
Okay, and you were previously sworn, correct? Thank you.
How old is the Belmar Inn? How long has been, this project's been there?
It was built prior to 1977 because it falls under the retrofit fire code act. I do not know in exact year.
Now, the problem, they have announced for the fire alone and the violation, were always there, or this is new?
I can always speak for the two years that I've been here and since I walked into that building.
Well, I mean, you've been there for thirty-five years, right?
Yes.
So, is the problem, were always there, or this is new?
This has been going on since I've...
No.
Yeah, and it just gets worse and worse every time.
So, based on that, based on the history, why do you see that for sure we're going to have a fire, Belmar Inn will have a fire now?
Why do they get caught on fire last winter? I'm amazed. With all those space heaters in there, and they were...
With the conditions that they, that they, we've witnessed, is what he's talking about, these space heaters, next to the muscle material, overloaded dumpsters, we were there two weeks ago for overloaded dumpsters. What's that?
But those problems were always there for years, right?
No, no, the heating system just broke now.
You make it sound like it's gonna, it's gonna, you know, take fire like in a minute now, but if...
No, it imposes a very, it imposes a risk, just like a, you know, any other vacant structure right now.
Sort of like any other, it's like, not just limited to the Belmar Inn, the Rappo Inn, right?
I think you have more of a chance of a shelter than you do of...
Like any other, like all those...
Compared to the speak with violations issued, there's more violations issued at that building than any other building in town.
Like any other rental, I mean, all these young people, they smoke, they do all this, it could happen in any, any, in Belmar Inn, correct?
You're right, it could happen. I think your probability is higher than the Belmar Inn.
They would?
That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's true, although you've been there for thirty-five years, I was probably been there for years and years, and nothing happened so far.
We can't babysit a building twenty-four hours a day. So, once we leave, once we leave, you know, like I said, once they leave, they have to plug back in whatever they were doing. Once we leave, they bring the heaters back. There's, you know, there's not much more we can do than issue a violation.
By the way, there's a risk, is it was always there with Belmar Inn, now they do?
Yeah, no, the risk hasn't gone away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Costello, Fourteenth Avenue, and I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you.
We are pleased that there are more parking spaces being proposed in the proposed new building. For the firemen, please? With the setbacks being as they are, and the roof possibly getting lower, the ceiling level, the CO2, the beepers, people starting their cars while they're upstairs, and, you know, we see it on the street, oh, it's fifteen, twenty minutes, got ten, fifteen of those cars down there doing that. At a time. What is the CO2? How, you know, I have my windows open year-round.
So, what you're asking is carbon monoxide, not cork and dioxide, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, carbon monoxide is the product that's coming out of the cars. In September, the Division of Fire Safety made an update to the fire codes requiring all commercial buildings and new structures to have carbon monoxide detection. Prior to that, it wasn't a regulation unless it was a single-family house. So, the system would be installed in the current, in the new building, would be a detection system, but it's not under my code, maybe the construction department can answer, but there would be required ventilation systems as well, possible.
Ooh, that possibly, that possibly is catching them.
I'm just kidding, that's not my, that's my account, that's not my...
Okay, so, it is a question, not a comment, so I'm going to question again, though. When you have a system like that, that exhausts out of the garage, and the neighbor is two feet away, how much airspace do they need around their house so that they are not hit with this? Because we all know...
That's not included in the fire prevention code, that would be a construction code question.
That's construction code.
Does Belmar's construction code address that?
I don't know, we have to estimate it's construction part.
I only, previous testimony took place about the ventilation that's happening in the garage.
Correct, but that testimony was at twenty-four cars...
That came up.
And a higher roof line. Now we're at forty cars, and a lower roof line.
So, your question is, is the ventilation system and the airspace going to be adequate for additional cars?
Yes.
Correct, so that's a question.
Because I don't want our neighbors...
That's a question that has to be revisited, because these gentlemen aren't...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Can you just say your name again?
Gloria.
Thank you.
I forgot my question.
All right, Gloria, I have a question for you. You're ninety years old, what's the secret?
Oh. Oh, I got it.
Today's, you have a mistake about.
Bravo. I've been there thirty-four years. You know, the Belmar Inn wasn't always an all-year rent. That was strictly a summer rental when it was the new urban. And, I'd say about twenty, twenty-five years ago, it became all-year rent. So, these problems weren't always there when you started.
They're getting progressive... They're getting progressively worse.
Because you let it. You let it. We complain and nothing is done.
I don't get on call.
My question, my question. I'm the only one that calls. I was told by Mr. Schaefer that I'm the only one. But anyway, I love this. Thank God the Yankees are not...
I love you.
Tomorrow night, Baltimore Ori.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Lou here.
Say your last name, please.
L O U H I E R.
H I E R. And I don't think you were previously sworn, right?
No, I was not.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Please, whether it has money, information you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best we know, to help you guys.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My question is with the fire marshal. Just getting back to the difference between the building, the existing building and the homes around it and the proposed. The fire suspension system for the proposed building, would you say that that is more valuable than the distance between two buildings?
For the interior of the structure, for the occupancy, for the firemen, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying like spacing between two structures is not as important as a fire suppression system? That would be more valuable to the neighborhood?
In a perfect world, both would be what we would choose for. Or compare, speaking from...
Perpetually speaking what you said.
Speaking from an existing building that, I'm not sure of the setbacks right now, compared to the setbacks that are proposed with the suppression system. It's more, I would personally say would be safer for the firemen and occupants with this particular building than not having a sprinkler system at all with a limited pressure system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sam Dawson, 1307 B Street.
Say your last name, please.
The Z C O.
All right, you were not previously sworn. Good evening. Please, whether the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best we know, to help you guys.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Pop?
Yes.
You had mentioned that the Belmar Inn is a drain on our school system.
Yes.
Okay, I'm a bit confused. I do understand how 24 condo units could possibly be a drain on our school system, but I don't understand how a hotel's occupants could be a drain on our school system, especially as everyone talks about the transients. So how long were these people there that they could actually be, excuse me, a drain? That part I don't understand.
That's a good question. I'll answer that. Most of the people that go to a hotel are transients. Ready?
Are, well, they don't stay long.
They must do.
Correct.
So you have people coming and going. So the children that are there have been moved from place to place to place. They have no standard roof over their head, so...
But it's, but I don't understand that. In other words, so they'll go there five days, they'll put their children in Belmar, then they move someplace else.
That's exactly what's happening. They stayed in for 30 days. 30 days and then...
That, okay, that's just very, very hard for me to comprehend, but thank you for answering your question.
John Meyer, 203 11th Avenue.
Were you previously sworn?
I was, what's that?
Were you previously sworn?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just, my questions to the applicants. I was wondering why you keep bringing up all this stuff about the Belmar Inn. Is your intention to influence the board to make them feel somewhat guilty about making them try to cure the problems that exist from that? I think the entire town of Belmar knows about the Belmar Inn and they would like to see it go. But when you bring in 24 units and now you're bringing in 40 cars and you're bringing, I'm speaking, okay? You're bringing in all these problems, you have setbacks, all these variances that you want. You're totally destroying the quality of life for the people around them.
Do you have any questions?
The question is predicated on this. Their answer responds back to what they're doing, they're destroying the quality of life of the people who aren't part of the Belmar Inn, okay? The question is, why are you bringing up all of these factors about the Belmar Inn that have nothing to do with a 24-unit building, which they, the 10 people in Belmar, you're standing to make something like $15 million, that's right.
Can I just jump in because you're sort of veering way out of the question? So I think your question was, Mr. Schaefer, why is your team bringing up information regarding the Belmar Inn? Now, I know you've ever spoken before, but let him answer the question. You asked him, he's got to answer.
The questions are to the three professionals after this post.
I can't hear you.
Well, I mean...
I can't hear you. What does the Belmar Inn has to do with your 24-unit condo that's impacting the entire town of Belmar and the quality of life of everybody around?
Okay, well, so we got the question, so Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Loski, and I'm previously answered that. Do you want to answer that again?
We have a writer who already previously answered it.
Well, maybe he didn't hear it.
Well, he has been here a lot.
Answer the question. Show some etiquette, man.
I think you actually gave a brief explanation and maybe it's worth just considering. So we've previously, Mr. Schaefer is not going to answer that question. But what we previously said before was that different people have different thoughts about how to present a case and...
Different people do what?
On how to present a case, how to present their case for the requirement.
That's fine, but I'm asking the connection.
Let me answer your question. So this is the way that he wants to do it and this is the way that he's allowed to do it and he's going to do it. Now, there's gonna be a time when you can cross-examine the witnesses, which you can. And now is the time to cross-examine the three gentlemen who have spoken tonight.
No, I have, all my questions are for that.
No, but the questions for the three witnesses, that's what I'm saying. The three witnesses who spoke tonight and just gave some testimony. Do you have any questions for those gentlemen?
I have no questions for the gentleman there. They're doing a fine job, we thank you for your service to this community.
And this is important because I know you have some comments to make. Because I know I sort of, and I apologize, I cut you off from your questions that were veering into a comment. There is gonna be a time when you can make your comments and when you can say those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'll take something.
Yes, Mr. President.
I'm not sure that people understand that the whole presentation is to us. Now, you're involved because you're permitted and encouraged to react to things. But the applicant's presentation is to the board and there's a certain process that we have to go through legally. We're required to do it. And there's a certain process that the applicant can go through at his or her discretion. So if you're impatient with the process, I can only say I'm sorry, but this is the way it works. But we have a very simple, straightforward application that's, you know, minimal. It doesn't take too long because we can go through it. This is a very, this is a major thing in town. And we all agree with that. The applicant is able to do whatever he or her would like to do to make their case. It takes as much time. So you have to understand that. If you're impatient with it, I'm sorry, that's the way it is. The presentation is to us as a board.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, next up.
Misses Gandy, 201 9th Avenue. I know it's late and I apologize for this question, but we have other hotels in town. Mayfair, Belmar Motor Lodge. Are they also transient? Do they have families? Do they have fire code? Are they up to the fire code that is supposedly the new building's fire? Are they all needing...
No, they, right now, currently, the only time extension for hotels in the property is the Mayfair Hotel, which will be beginning construction after the summer season to make repairs to violations, to bring them up to retrofit. The Belmar Motor Lodge is up to retrofit fire code and up to fire code, which also only has a limited area detection system. No other hotels in town have any type of fire suppression.
Are there children in those hotels that are also part of the burden on the school system?
I don't know.
And do you get calls, do you get calls for both of those hotels?
I couldn't tell you the last time I was in the Belmar Motor Lodge.
Okay, how about, can I hear?
Yeah, I get complaints for the Mayfair. I get complaints to, not really the Belmar Motor Lodge, but the Mayfair, I do get complaints.
Okay. Thank you.
Only questions. To the experts.
The experts. Back to the way, we'll get to him later.
Will you say your name before we begin?
John Meyer, 203 11th Avenue. There have been several questions from people in Belmar with regard to access for firefighters to get to the building, ladder concerns and that. Do you think it would be a good suggestion if we actually get fire chiefs or some people here to give their opinion on what they think of this building and how they could fight the fire instead of coming through people's yard and stuff like that? Just a suggestion that they should come and testify also?
If you'd like to get, I mean, I've had meetings with them. I'm not sure if they're willing to discuss their tactics.
That's fine. I just think it would be a good thing, the question is not in your area of expertise and I think that the firefighter should know if he can get, he has to put the ladder from, you know, Gino's Tomato Garden or from, you know, someplace else, just a suggestion.
I, I'll answer. I can talk to the fire department again. We had a meeting two, two, three nights ago where we reviewed all the plans where they, we discussed any tactical considerations and we think they produce enough.
It would be an important factor so that people feel more comfortable that they could have access, they could fight the fire, you know, if it came up. My suggestion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Ms. Manay, 308 12th Avenue.
Say your last name, please.
M A N D.
You were not previously sworn, correct?
Uh, no, not this time.
All right, we'll swear you and you swear that the information and testimony you write to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best we know, to help you guys.
I do.
Thank you.
Perhaps you answered this before and forgive me if it's repetitive, but I'd like to know, does a fire suppressed building have to have a certain number of units in order to be designated a fire suppressed building? Or can it have less units than 24, for example?
That's true.
Anything over three?
Anything over three, so we don't actually need to have a 24-unit building in order to have the benefits of a fire suppression system? Is that correct? Okay, okay, thank you. We'll start with capacity. You mentioned capacity of the Belmar Inn with the 40 rooms. You had something like sometimes 80 people there. I just did a quick calculation. Is it possible that a 24-unit building with maybe four people per unit, which by my calculations comes to 96 people, would be more than a bigger, greater capacity than the Belmar Inn currently is?
I would have no idea how many people would be in there.
Well, with the...
I don't even know how many, the apartments are or the condos are.
Well, according to the last hearing, I believe some of them were two-bedroom buildings and some of them were one, so I don't know how many of each were. But I just did a quick calculation, 24 units and made most of them two-bedroom units, so that would be four per person. So I figured there might be 96 people living in the condo unit. Does that sound within the ballpark? Which might be greater capacity than the Belmar Inn currently is.
I was gonna say hypothetically.
Hypothetically, yes, I think that might be good. And if there's five, that could raise it up to 120 people living in the 24-unit condo. And talking about the school system, I wanted to know, have you been in touch with the school system or have they complained to you about children coming in and out every three or four days with, you know, with no school records from any school district and just allowing them to come in and out? Have you gotten that information from the school system or is that just something that you formulated your own opinion about?
No, no, I have not got any lately, but then I haven't been in touch with the school. But years passed, it's an ongoing problem and I don't see it getting any better.
Most school systems require children to have records and sometimes it takes many days to get records from one school system to another. So the odds of them going from the Belmar Inn to come into the school system within a few days seems a little bit, you know, hard to believe, I guess, to say.
I don't want to have that horse.
Okay, but do you think that having a 24-unit condo building with perhaps a capacity of 120 people and maybe that would have more of an impact on the school system? With children, more children that would be living there all year round rather than transient might have a greater impact on the school system? You don't know? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who's next?
Lauren Arataki, sworn to Trump.
Previously sworn.
This is a question about when you, there is a violation. I know that you've mentioned, you'll tell them they can't use the space heater and then when you leave, they just plug it back in. So what happens when they're, are they fined originally the first time?
No, they, like we said, there's a process that goes, so we go, we do an inspection. We do our inspection, we issue either certification of passing or normally it's a notice of violation. So we serve the person with a notice of violation. With the Belmar Inn, it's a little bit tough getting the violations to the management. Same with other structures where we have to mail it, certify, mail it, et cetera. So once they get there, they have to be given the chance to unplug or get rid of the space heater. So we come back and let's just give it, say, 14 days. They, their state requires at least two weeks. So we come back in 14 days and the space heater is gone. You get cleared out of your violation, we leave. I may not be in that building again for another year, depending on when or if there's a complaint. So if I observe that violation again, yes, they get the same violation and they get the same time and fix it. We can't just issue a penalty for a space heater or an extension cord. It has to be something severe.
Is it just a violation? Is there a fine involved?
No, like I said, it's a violation. What our code is intended to do is to educate the public. So we educate them, you know, we don't just go out and hand out fines to every business in town. We have to educate them and it's a process.
So does management get violation or the occupant?
The management, the occupant's not responsible. It's management's responsibility to keep a building safe. So they do their best in telling people, because it's still every time we go into different, whether it be a hotel, whether it be a rooming house, people cooking in rooms, fire alarms go off, fire department goes, then I get a complaint, then I go out there. When I go there, there's nothing there.
So if there's repeat offenders for the same offense over and over?
Within a certain time period, there can be.
What is the fine?
It's up to $5,000, it could be up to, I don't have an exact number, around near $5,000.
Has the Belmar Inn been fined?
Yes, they have been fined.
For that, for that amount? Numerous times?
Not $5,000, no.
Why not?
Because we have a certain fine schedule that we do in town to be fair to every single establishment, whether it be a regular convenience store, a hotel, a rooming house, a, you know, a bar.
Okay, does pertaining to the Belmar Inn, I don't need to know about?
Well, I'm just explaining that. We have a certain process that we have to follow.
I know, but if there are consistent violations...
Within a certain time period, yes, they will get a fine.
What, what is the determinant so that it doesn't happen again? What is your part in this and what is their part in this?
My part is intervening in educating either a manager, employee...
But you're telling them the same things over and over, if it's the same...
Depends on the employee, I mean, there's tons of different people who I've dealt with in that establishment that have been there for a week. You know, they're there for three months, they leave, they come back. There's new people every time you walk in that building, employee-wise.
But isn't there one owner?
I've never, I've never actually met the actual owner. From what I've been told, he lives in India. I've met his representative. I've met the representative, that's who I dealt with when I went to court. And once we, they take us to court, we have to wait till the court makes a decision before we can even act on that. And for that, for a bunch of violations, that went six months without a hearing. So we sit and wait until they're hearing. So we sit and wait until they're hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's getting late, folks, by show of hands, can I see how many people are going to come up and ask the experts questions? So I don't see any, so nobody else wants a question, I can close the public portion. All right, well. All right, does anybody, hold on, does anybody else have questions that they want to ask tonight? Because if there's more than just one, I think I'd like to close it anyway. All right, so we're going to make this the last question tonight, and after this, we're going to close the public portion.
This is a question for you.
Oh, for me?
The plans are changing, again. New forty parking spaces as opposed to twenty-four setbacks, whatever, are we going to be noticed again legally with the changes? Now, probably a letter in the mail that tells us what we're looking at, what the variances are?
I don't know yet, I'm gonna, I don't know what the new plans are going to be, and I don't know if it's going to materially change the nature of the relief. So at the risk of giving you an annoying answer, I don't know, depends, I'm gonna have to see.
How do we find out?
Well, what we're gonna do tonight presumably is we're going to carry the meeting to a new date. And I'm assuming there's going to be no notice required unless the plan revisions required. So there's gonna be, you'll be given a notice tonight as to when the new hearing will be. And if the plan revisions require a new notice, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Bosso, you will have to do it, but I don't know that yet, because I haven't seen the new plans.
Okay, can I make a request for the public that we're on the docket first, as opposed to, we're always continuing, continuing, and there's other applications before, they take an hour, take an hour and a half, you see that, four, five times, and we're, we don't seem to be getting any. They haven't gotten to the nitty-gritty about what we don't like about the point, but anyway, I'd like to see us get notice, especially if we get these kind of changes.
I'm sure they will follow the law on the, on the public notice, I'll have to do it with Mr. Kennedy. You can call April. But I mean, we're gonna give you a date tonight at a minimum as to when to come back. All right, is that it? Thank you very much.
Chairman, I have one comment I'd like to make though, and I think it's important that Joe drew you here. The reason why the other applicants were allowed to go first were because they were simple applications and they weren't going to take up the entirety of the evening. So in, as courtesy to our fellow neighbors so they could begin their construction, they went first and now they're able to build their homes and put their additions on. If we hadn't done that, the last three meetings would have been entirely taken up by this hearing, and all of them would have been queued up until October or November. So as a courtesy, we dispatched those first, okay? And I think that was the right decision to make. So in terms of sequence, they yielded to that, so we could allow the other applications to happen. So, and I think that was a great strategy, and if you were one of those applicants, you would have felt the same.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I would like to close the meeting this evening. We're officially closing the public portion for the questions for the three officials, thank you for your time. Mr. Kennedy will carry the application to, I assume, the next speaker, so you open it up further.
I think I'd like to. I think somewhat of a strain in the event of a redenied or republished, that takes another, literally two weeks, ten days, newspaper mailing, things of that nature. If that's a determination of Mr. Kennedy, we also have to get whatever amendments are going to happen developed. We've spent literally the balance of this month trying to accommodate the concerns we've heard about parking. I want to also yield to Ms. Guardio's schedule so that she could get any other plans potentially on, or applicants on for September, so that we're not monopolizing this board. So from our perspective, I think October is a more appropriate timeframe when, if we have to redenied, there'll be a sufficient timeframe, but I don't want to tee it up for September and get back into where we were, where we didn't have enough time to notice, there wasn't enough time to publish, and then we're adjourned.
Fair enough. Mr. Chairman, my good friend April tells me that the October meeting is October twenty-fifth. So with your consent, Mr. Schaefer's and members of the public, we are going to adjourn this meeting to October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at this point, without the need for any further public notice. So, Mr. Schaefer and Bosso, if you, on behalf of your. Could you please keep quiet? Consent to a certain timeframe with the support of that. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, seven o'clock P.M., prevailing time. No further notice at this point, thank you. And I guess we should have a motion today. I have a motion, Harry.